Public hearings.
Okay, if I could have your attention, it's 5:30. The mayor is out of town, so she will not be here, and we have Councilman Hall on the phone. MJ, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, good, so we're ready to go. First, we have a couple of public hearings, so I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Wilmot.
Good evening, I forgot my regular glasses, that's why I had the sunglasses on, so I apologize. First of all, I'd like everybody to know that the City of Tifton has written public hearing procedures and standards of exercise in zoning powers that copy Georgia conflict laws available as I hand out, and also posted for public review. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on a zoning application filed by the City of Tifton. That's PP 22-0035 concerning amendments to the city's land development code, section 4.03.32 relating to banquet and meeting halls and event centers. I'd like to ask the council members, any conflict? Have any of these applicants or opponents of the application contributed to at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification, or amendments to the zoning ordinance, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest, any business entity that has a property interest, say a real property, that would be affected by the proposed rezoning and amendments to this zoning ordinance, whether that property is a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
All right, this time I'd like to ask Crystal Gaylord if she would come up and tell us what this is about.
Thanks, Rob. On October 3rd, I presented to mayor and council a draft of the event center entertainment permit changes to land development code. The high points are six events can be held in a calendar month by a special event center. The hours of operation can be from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., but no events to be held on Sunday. Event centers who have been convicted of a noise ordinance violation would not be able to hold entertainment permits for six months. Also included in the ordinance contains the provisions for appeals and the actual application that would need to be filled out by the applicants. Those are the high points of the ordinance change. I have copies of the ordinance if anyone from the public would like to view them.
Thank you. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? If there's no other public comment, I say a public hearing be closed.
Okay.
The next public hearing is on application PP 22-036. It's concerning amendments to the city's land development code, section 4.07.00, standards for plan development overlays. Again, I'd like to ask the council the conference questions. Have any of these applicants or opponents of the application contributed at least $250 to any of the campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification, or amendment to the zoning ordinance, whether that property is a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest, say a real property, that would be affected by the proposed rezoning, reclassification, or amendment to this zoning ordinance, whether that interest be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
All right, again, I ask, Crystal, will you come up and tell us what this proposed amendment to the ordinance is about?
Thank you. The proposed ordinance would include changes that allow for a one-step or a two-step process for plan development overlays. The one-step process would include all items required for submission, including engineering plans, stormwater, civil drawings, traffic studies, just the entire packet. We also laid out the two-step process, which would include a conceptual plan being approved first before expending monies on very expensive studies like traffic studies, civil engineering, stormwater, hydrology reports, all of those items. So this really made it more user-friendly for the developers who want to undertake these processes, that they wouldn't have to expend large sums of monies before the concept plan would be allowed or approved by council. This ordinance also laid out the amendment modification process, laying out the minor amendments that can be done in-house by staff or major amendments that would have to go before council. This ordinance also laid out a development, or the requirement for a development contract, which would include timeframes and what the developer would be responsible for upfront. It also laid out the rescinding process. So if the work has not been done in the approved timeline in the development contract, the city would have right to rescind approval of the PDO. Again, that's a summary of a nine-page ordinance, so if anybody would like more details or if I've oversimplified it, let me know.
Thank you, Crystal. Is anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? If there's no other public comment, I say it be closed.
Okay.
We'll close that.
Okay, thank you, Crystal, thank you, Rob. All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Josh to give us the praise and the pledge.
Everybody bow your heads, please. Dear most heavenly gracious Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day, Lord. We just thank you for this time that we have to fellowship, Lord. And we just ask that you lead and guide us and lay on our hearts the right things to do to lead this city. And we just ask that you bless us all, Lord, and in the most heavenly gracious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Keep your eyes...
Our blessed leaders, in the light of the United States of America, in the group of which extends one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, at the outset, at our last meeting, we elected Emily Beaman as our acting city manager, and I want to recognize her before we get started. She's welcome to the table.
Thank you.
Emily, we appreciate it. All right, gentlemen, you've got, the agenda was sent out by Jessica, and I'm sure you've had a chance to review it. I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
A motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Josh, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Uh.
And the minutes were passed out, so you've had a time to review them or take a minute here. I'll entertain a motion again to approve them.
No to approve.
Thank you, Josh.
Second.
Second by Lester, all right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, a couple of things. We've got a swearing-in. I'll ask Mr. Emmett Cader, that's where it's going to be, to come forward. Cader's going to join our Tifton planning and zoning board.
I, Emmett Cader, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton Planning and Zoning Board of this city and that I will support and defend the charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless procedentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards of conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards of conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the state of Georgia. I shall also attend to ask for any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you swear or affirm?
I swear.
Thank you.
All right, I will get you to sign right here.
Thank you. My writing is terrible.
I understand terrible writing. We're both left-handed, so that's part of it.
I'll sign.
Can I ask one question?
You can.
Is there a fiduciary place you have to go for, fiduciary trust, anything like that? Like you go to a fiduciary school? Am I making any kind of a sense? Because usually when you get in a board like this, you have a responsibility to the city as a fiduciary or trustee, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a school that we have to go to for fiduciary responsibilities?
Yes, there's planning and zoning training. Crystal's over the planning and zoning board, and she'll get you set up with that.
Okay, but that's a little bit different than what we talked about here. Am I making sense, or does it work like that?
You're asking, are you going to get paid?
No, 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 not that. See, when you have a fiduciary responsibility, when you're involved in, Rob, it's...
Well, that is probably more in the training session that you'll get. I don't believe there's anything separate as a fiduciary. So I think they'll probably touch on those type of points, you know, conflict of interest, fiduciary responsibilities. I think that they touch on that in that training.
Okay, that's what I need to know then, okay.
Congratulations.
We're always looking for good people to serve on these boards, so if you have an interest, please see Jessica put in application. All right, now it's time to go ahead and go whirl day. Can Miss Lundy come up?
And I have Lundy Yolanda Lewis, and she's born today. She is the church of Tifton Division of Georgia.
Yolanda?
Oh.
All right, we've got a lot of questions here. Whereas, as a nonprofit collaborator, the Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth, which I'll now refer to as TC3Y, shares the Georgia Family Connections focus of improving the conditions for children, families, and communities by serving as a local decision-making body and bringing community partners together to develop, implement, and evaluate plans that address the serious challenges facing Georgia's children and families. And whereas, by working closely with various community partners, TC3Y is able to foster local relationships, increase policy papers' awareness of local issues, put into action proven practices, and leverage additional funding to support the community plan for Tifton. And whereas, having luminaries lit throughout the county at the same time with the same mission of joining together for our children's best interests while envisioning that anywhere you go in Tifton County, you will see the light and recognize how unified we are as a community in our efforts to ensure that children have a safe and caring environment is the vision of this community-wide event. Whereas, by working together with faith-based organizations and community agencies, clubs, businesses, and individuals on this specific day, TC3Y strives to keep the youth of Tifton County safe and out of gangs by offering alternative positive activities with hopes that throughout the year, and especially on this day, our community will provide encouraging constructive programs for our youth that encourages involvement in positive activities. And now, therefore, I, Vice Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby proclaim my October 19, 2022, as Go Ahead Go Whirl Day for the City of Tifton. And I encourage all citizens to join me in working with the Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth as we strive to provide the best community and environment for the children, youth, and families of Tifton. Given under my hand and seal, the City of Tifton is 17th day of October, 2022. Thank you. Would you all like to say a word?
I'll say a couple of words, if that's okay. We've been doing this for many years. We started out with a handful of signs, and now we have over 100. And even today, I have people walking in the office, wanting to participate. There's still time to participate, even though it's Wednesday, this week, it's October the 19th. I can still take web pic or web screen and getting on movies. And so, at this point in time, it shows the support of the, for us as a community. That's the big thing, it gives us as a community the opportunity at one time in unity to show our support of our youth. And we have found that everybody's taken this opportunity to participate, and it's grown stronger and stronger. And it reminds us as a community, the ones of us that already are working toward the youth of Tifton County and that ensure that they're involved in positive activities and that they have opportunities and that they know that we're supporting them. And so, but this is our chance to invite all of you as citizens, community agencies, anybody to participate with us. It's easy to do, just now coming, filling out the application. That's only so we know where they are. And so, put the luminaries out, hopefully from 7:00 until 8:30, and then putting in if you can. Now, all of these things, if I have to do, yeah, put the luminaries out. We would hope you would register your site, and we would hope you would put it on Facebook and use the hashtag. So if anybody's interested, dial number is 388-1000.
I might ask a question if I may.
Yes.
Do you take those kids on field trips and youths for the stuff?
That is on the agency. For this particular event, there is, there are some youth and developers who certainly have youth groups that do the, as far as may serving all the youth of Tifton County. This is a community effort where different agencies do it. But for this particular event, there is not an hour or anything. It's a show of youth, and there's been put out. And then, we do have pledge cards at many churches that have signed their communities' names.
The reason I said that, because whenever I'm not on the board here, I get my writing on my left leg for the youth, taking them on field trips like to Larkin, somewhere still making aircraft. I've been there and done that. Taking them to Atlanta, see how they run those planes on the ground, let these kids see this stuff. And then take them to Space Center, and let them see how they make fire trucks and engines and things like that for the youth. That's what I was doing, I love doing stuff like that for the youth. I'm trailblazer. I just didn't know if that's what this was, and if it was, I want in, when I'm not here.
Well, this particular event is part of our big goal, which is the Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth.
It's there.
Our function is community collaboration to improve the lives of children and the families. So this is just one of the small things that we did throughout the year.
Well, if I can help you, please let me know, because I've got to get you in these places.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. I will, if needed, I will leave you one of those lines, pass my information.
Yes, ma'am.
Contact you more.
I'd be really glad this season.
Oh, wonderful, thank you, sir. I need us, thank you.
That's why the commission is giving me a chance to do it, when I'm not busy here. Okay, good, thank you. Primary or secondaire?
Okay. Next, I'm going to recognize Ms. Karen Thompson with the public library. I've had the pleasure of serving on the library board. And talk about somebody coming in and hitting the ground running. What Karen has done at that library in just the short time she's been there is nothing short of fantastic, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, for coming.
Can I come up and distribute these to you?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members. I've met most of you. There's Mr. Comer and Mr. Reynolds. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you yet, but I'm new to Tifton, and I'm the new branch manager for the library. I've been here for approximately eight months now. And I am a community-focused individual. My goal in librarianship is to keep the library established as one of the many heartbeats in a community that help raise us all, all of us together. So I'm pleased to share with you that since coming on board, when I first came on board, we were averaging around 3,400 people per month. In June, we hit 8,802 people. In July, we hit 8,243 people at the height of our summer reading program. And typically, as the fall comes, our numbers sharply decrease, but ours are maintaining. So I'm excited to share that our usage is up dramatically to 6,621 people in August, 6,240 in September. So that we're seeing a direct result of our programming efforts. For the fall and beyond, I wish to share with you that we are now offering comprehensive programming. It's a very robust schedule, and our community is responding well to this. We are now offering programs for ages from zero all the way through to adults and families. And we are doing a really aggressive outreach campaign to meet patrons more where they are and introducing them to library services. So now we are in regular rotation with AVAC, our area schools, daycares, both in the daycare and also in our facility, as well as outreach to Leroy Rogers Senior Center. We actually retired our big green reading machine and was able to purchase a smaller vehicle, which we've, it's labeled "library on the loose," or LOL. It lets us get where we need to go, and it has been very successful, and we're very grateful for that as well. In October and November, you can see that we are also hosting special events, including October's Fright Night events geared to children and families. Tomorrow's, we're hosting an evening at Hogwarts from 6:00 to 7:00. Next Tuesday, we're hosting George Washington. This is a reenactor. He's offering a historically accurate on-curriculum presentation, which we're excited to see. We've dubbed it George Washington's Ghost. In November, I've given you a tentative November schedule. We're hoping to add on our public reveal of our recent paranormal investigation. We're absolutely haunted. But we are also hosting part of Celebrate Creativity, which the city is putting on for November 5th, as well as the Carnival Games for the Traditional Fall Festival downtown as part of Second Saturday on November 12th. In December, we will be launching a winter reading program for children that will let them turn their reading rewards into a shopping experience so they can purchase things using their reading bucks for their families for Christmas, as well as images with Santa, and we will also be in the parade. So as we move into the spring, our next summer reading focus is community-oriented again. Our theme is "All Together Now," and we will expand our outreach more into the community. And we are very excited about what the future holds and everything that we're doing. In just wrapping up, I just want to say thank you very much for supporting us financially, for giving us Mr. Folk to serve on our board. He's a wealth of knowledge and has helped us through many things. But specifically, from my heart, thank you for helping us repair our HVAC recently. We couldn't have done that without you, so thank you for supporting us.
Great. Anybody have any questions for...
Sounds like some great things happening at the library, huh? Very impressive.
Thank you very much.
I'll be attending some of them.
The library's not about books, just books anymore.
No. No, we're everywhere and everything. Technology seems to be the recent focus. We're able to use technology to help teach people in our community various tools, and we've had a lot of successes with people finding jobs that have increased their financial status, so we're very excited about our accomplishments. But we couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay. Next, guys, we have the consent agenda. For everybody that's not, these are items that we discussed at our workshop, so they've been thoroughly discussed. We present them as a consent agenda, and we can discuss them one at a time. We can take a motion to approve altogether, whatever you wish to do.
I motion approve altogether.
Okay, thank you, Lester.
Second.
Second by Josh, all right. All in favor of approving those, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, that passes. New business. I'll ask Larry Lawrence, our CFO, to come up and talk about banking services.
Yes, good evening. Yeah, we have put a RFP, request for proposals, to the local banks, and we had four local banks respond, and we got some very good proposals. We went through and ranked each one of their services, and Maris come out on top on that, and they gave us a very good interest rate on our funds. So that's who we're with now, but signing a three-year contract, we will get a very good interest rate for the next three years, staying with Ameris. So it turned out to be good to go ahead and do that RFP, so.
So that's your recommendation that we approve?
Yes, to stay with Ameris and sign a three-year contract, and we will get that 80% of the federal funds rate, interest rate on our funds, so. It's a very good, very good deal with them.
All right. Any questions about that? I looked at the proposal, and it looks like it's a good one.
Yeah, it's thorough.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to award Ameris with the banking service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. The next one is this moving our investment managed services. Larry, let me ask you, does AMB, have we had any discussion with AMB?
No.
About this?
No, if we approve to change it, I will notify them and, you know, give them...
So they don't know that we're even looking at this?
No. None of them.
Okay. I'm a little, can, Rob, if we wanted to, that's something, I'd rather wait on that than take action so we could potentially table it. Is that, do we table that, or what, do we need to just not?
Probably, I mean, how much, you could either postpone it indefinitely, or you can postpone it, have a motion postpone it to a certain time. So if you just want to have a motion to postpone indefinitely, then we can put it down on an agenda, or if you want to take it up at the next workshop, then you can postpone it to that certain date.
I'd like to ask that we postpone this to the next workshop, if that's okay? I need to have a little further discussion that I didn't get a chance to have with Larry about our current. So if y'all would, if I could have a motion, it says we postpone this to the next, to the workshop.
Motion postpone to the next workshop. My second.
All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, okay. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, thank you, Larry. All right, next, I think we had discussed this at the last meeting. There's ordinance for amending the current PDO there at the VA clinic, and I'll ask Crystal Gaylord to come forward and refresh us on what's, what we're doing on that one.
Yeah, so the, I call it the VA PDO, but it's the Plan Development Overlay where the VA sits on 20th Street. The amendment would be to allow the current church to be incorporated into the site plan, which would get rid of the plans for building two new buildings on that site. So it would just allow the church to stay.
Okay, any questions for Crystal?
Not to answer.
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
I motion approve.
Thank you, Lester.
Second.
Second by Josh, all right. All in favor of approving that ordinance, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is ordinance for amending the city's land development code for this banquet and meeting halls. We just had the public hearing, so I think we're familiar with that. I'll entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
I motion approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving that ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
In, aye, in, motion carries. All right, next one is ordinance for amending the land development code for standards for PDOs. This is a long time coming, we needed this. But that's where we had the other public hearing on that. That's where we had the other public hearing on that, so entertain a motion to approve that ordinance.
Motion to approve.
My second.
Thank you. All right, all in favor of that ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that's all of business there. Next, we have a board report. Jessica, do we have anything you need to bring up for, on boards?
Yes, we've had quite a bit of applications for that vacancy on the URA board. All of the applications we received are in your packet. And based on our board policy, I put if they met or did not meet the requirements, those were also submitted to the URA board, and the URA board recommended Victor Pires for appointment to that board. And so that's for y'all's consideration tonight, if you would like to move forward.
We've kind of tended in the past to wait till everyone was here. I hate to go and appoint someone to a board, the mayor's not here, MJ's on the phone, but, you know, it just seems to work better to me if everybody's present.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
All right, we'll just delay until the mayor returns, and we'll have her take it up. All right, and now we'll have the acting city manager aboard.
Just two quick things. We received notification on October 10th that GDOT was awarded the Eighth Street Widening Project, which is funded by TSCLOST. This is point two four six miles of Eighth Street from Magnolia to Seventy-Five. They will be widening that. This is to enhance safety, congestion relief, and economic development with that infrastructure there. The second thing is we are, we will hold our Anthony Bateman Youth Center grand opening next Thursday, October 27th, at four o'clock. This is open to the public. It's a great building that will have educational after-school activities as well as adult learning. So it's a great opportunity, something great for our community. I welcome everybody to come out. It is across from Matt Wilson at 511 West Seventeenth Street.
Question about the Eighth Street, is, I saw the email that came out about it. Are they going to get that craziness straight that's there? It's a Mexican restaurant now, it used to be the KFC, you know, how you, I mean, it's just foolish. It's the most dangerous thing I've seen. Are they getting rid of that, where the two lanes actually, are two lanes all the way, or do we, or at least it's a turn lane, or?
Yeah, it's supposed to be adding a turn in lane.
Right now, you have to go left and then get down on the interstate, it's a...
Tell them where you're going.
They're adding another lane to that section that's behind the widening, and so it's going to, it's going to allow for the traffic to go into Fullwood, to be able to get off of Fullwood, and then allow for the traffic to go into Seventy-Five, or that turn lane to be a separate lane when you go on to that. And then it will head down back at the rank of your head to Lincoln. So they're basically adding that, so they kind of allow one lane to do each option.
Okay, so it's going to get rid of those, whatever's there now?
The laws that are...
Yes. They need to ban those things from all streets. So, okay. All right, that's all you have? All right, I'll start with comments, just because I want to pick up on, speaking of streets, and I would ask Emily, and maybe get with Adam, and somebody please review Twentieth and Forty-One. I talked to Pete with it, I doubt we, I don't think we got really far. That's, if you notice, on Twentieth headed west, you've got three lanes going one way. One of them's a turn lane, onto Forty-One, and then there's two. So anybody turning off of Forty-One to go toward the hospital can only turn into one lane. Makes it very difficult if you're turning right onto that same thing in this one lane, especially if there's people trying to stop to go into Espresso Forty-One. But why that's not just two lanes and two lanes, two going one way and two going the other, because on the other side of the street, because of that, if you're headed toward the hospital on Twentieth, you ride in, you got two lanes, but then you have to move over to the right lane, so that you can then go back to the left lane, so you can turn. Somebody had to stay up late at night to figure out why you, I mean, what's uncommon about four lanes, two go this way, two go the other way. If you want to turn left, we can, I'm sure, get a left turn signal to turn there, which, by the way, there's not one there now, so you just kind of sit. But please, Adam, and I don't know if...
That's a DOT.
I'm sure DOT has to be involved, and they're probably the ones that thought it up. Because they're the same ones that thought up that business.
They did, they're the ones that designed the grid.
Of course they did. Well, it's foolishness, just like the affinity, eggs at their affinity is foolishness with the way they've got those bollards, I mean, that. Can we get some common sense? That is, I've seen numerous almost wrecks, right there, somebody turning, somebody was at Espresso, and they near about rear-ended him, and we said, oh, wait a minute, then they're going to hit, hit the car that's in the left turn lane. It's crazy. So I think we got a new guy at DOT, and maybe let's talk with him and see if we can do something, because that's, there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. A lot of traffic. That's all I got to say today.
I'll go next. For me, it's pretty simple. Early voting started today, and I just want to ensure that everyone exercises their right to vote and get in on the early voting as soon as possible. That's it for me.
Good. I'm good enough. Josh, you good?
Good.
MJ, would you or your little boy like to talk?
No, I'm good, and my little's good as well.
Okay, well, I heard him, and then he must have heard me talking, that's why he was saying something.
Oh, Lord.
Yep, you heard me, Jack.
There you go. Hey, he likes me, what can I say? All right, anybody got anything else? We will need to go into executive session for legal and personnel. So with that, we'll adjourn the regular meeting and go into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a motion.
Motion.
Motion, oh, I got a motion. I'm a little rusty here, thank you. Josh, motion, Lester, second.